Good evening, everyone. The hour of six o'clock having arrived. I'll call this October 6th Borough Council Workshop Meeting to Order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before we get started, I'll entertain a motion to allow Councillor Stube to participate remotely due to a family commitment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ramsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Checked in by Ms. Fulm Winston. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have. Welcome, Jeff.
Thanks.
Moving on to citizens to be heard. Madam Secretary, are there any scheduled citizens to be heard this evening?
There are none, Mayor.
All right, any in the Zoom? Anyone seeking recognition?
They are hung up there.
All right, anyone in the audience? All right, fantastic. Moving on. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations tonight. The first will be Chief Brian Hamilton and Chief Dan Grimes, if they could come forward to receive their Pima certification. And the floor is yours, sir.
Borough Council Mayor, thank you for allowing me to come here. I'm Justin Schollus. I'm the Planning Coordinator for Criminal County Department of Public Safety, one of the folks that is responsible for administering this education program to the local emergency management coordinators. So tonight, we're going to be presenting Brian Hamilton with his, his basic certification. It consists of six hours of online, or six hours of classroom training, thirty hours of online training, for a total of thirty-six hours. And Dan Grimes with his advanced certification, which is approximately forty hours at classroom, as well as forty-eight hours of online training, for a total of eighty-eight hours. So both of those certifications are, you know, pretty substantial commitment of time, so we want to recognize them at a council meeting, and we appreciate that. So without further ado, Chief Hamilton. Appreciate, and we appreciate the cooperation. And the county certainly does appreciate the cooperation we've seen from your local coordinator, Chief Randy O'Donnell, as well as his two deputies here. They've been a pleasure to work with so far, and we expect that to continue on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, gentlemen. And using a bit of Mayor's prerogative, we're going to go back to citizens to be heard. And the Chair recognizes our esteemed co-chair of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, Ms. Towanda Stoller.
Thank you, Mayor Scott. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you again. Thank you Deputy Mayor Schultz and members of Borough Council. I just wanted to take an opportunity to speak to agenda item that you all will be discussing later on today regarding the special event street closure for Saturday, October 16th. And I just wanted to give a shout out, if you will, to Borough Manager Susan Armstrong, Parks and Rec Director Andrea Kraus, Chief of Police Terrell Landis, and Sergeant Miller for their support and cooperation of this endeavor. Truly, it has been an undertaking since the borough has made sort of recommitment to community engagement and moving in that way, and really being able to collaborate with these folks in the way of community engagement and providing an opportunity for some new leadership to emerge from our Black and Brown community. It's not lost on me, the effort that goes into that. So I just wanted to publicly enter that into the record, that their support is appreciated and welcomed, and I know you all will have some discussion about it later on this evening. But just wanted to make that known, that Susan and Andrea have been great supports of this work and this endeavor, and certainly appreciate it, and wanted to make that known tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. All right, moving on to outside agencies. I'll turn things over.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, sorry, jump in real quick. I don't know if I maybe missed this because I'm on Zoom, but did we call the roll?
No, we did not. Madam Secretary, please call the roll. Oh, no, wait. No, no, we, yeah, sorry. That's right. It's workshop. We don't call the roll during workshop. You had me second guessing myself, Jeff. Thank you very much. Okay.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. I've done it many times myself. All right.
We're all here, if it makes you feel better.
We're all here. Turning things over to Deputy Mayor Schultz for the outside agencies presentation.
Okay, this is our annual presentation from outside agencies that we fund through our budget. We received all the applications from the agencies who submitted. So to give you a little bit of background, what we'll be doing is hearing from each of the agencies. You'll each have five minutes to provide your presentation. Many of you we've seen before, so you can feel free to give us the highlights. As I said, we have your applications in front of us here. And the next steps after we hear from you would be, for me as the Finance Chair, Councillor Stube, as the Chair of Employee Relations and Citizens Participation Committee, to meet with Assistant Borough Manager Snyder to make a final recommendation to council that will then be heard during and considered during our budget presentation in November. So what I'm going to do is run down the list that we have here on the agenda, and I'll ask a representative from each organization to come forward to the podium, give us your name, your address, it can be a home address, it can be a business address, and then provide us your request, the quick highlights. And for those, there are a few organizations that didn't provide a specific dollar amount in the request. It would be helpful if you touch on that. Dollar amounts help us to figure out how to, how to budget for this, and, or explain why you didn't provide one, and why you can't, if you're unable to. So I will begin with Boslar Memorial Library.
Well, good evening. My name is Jeff Swope. I'm the Executive Director at the Boslar Memorial Library. That's 158 West High Street here in Carlisle. And I am always, as always, appreciative to be here this evening in the interest of time and in the interest of the fact that you've all heard me far more than you ever wanted to, year after year after year. I thought if I could be allowed just a few of my minutes, I would let some others speak to you tonight, from some quotes from some of our patrons. And so the first one says, "With three curious kids, our family has been so grateful to have the children's library at Boslar as a constant throughout the pandemic. Not only does the staff do an incredible job of curating great books that they make easy and safe to borrow, but they began offering high-quality and engaging activity kits in lieu of the in-person classes that they usually offer. Boslar-centered days reliably occupy and delay our kids even as we continue to social distance." Another patron wrote to us, "I am especially grateful this year for the support and materials Boslar offered to me and my son Dan, who is a client at a neurological rehab and residential program in Lancaster. During the shutdown, I was able to deliver books, videos, and CDs to him every week or two, and read books to him over the phone. We are currently reading a series called Classic Starts, adaptations of many well-known classics. Thank you for providing such a series for high-interest, low-ability readers. It has helped Dan and me broaden our reading and provide entertainment and distraction during the pandemic." And then the last one I'll share with you this evening is, "The library's eBooks helped me read my way through the pandemic, a real lifeline with access to thousands of books anytime, in any place, and completely free. The Libby app is an amazing resource. If you don't know what Libby is, email me. I'll tell you all about it. And we are respectfully requesting $2,500 this year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you."
Thank you. Are there any questions for Jeff? Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks very much.
Next up is Carlisle Area Dog Park Association, and I understand, oh, here in person. Okay.
Rob Dean, Vice President, I believe is calling in via Zoom.
Okay.
We'll see if he joins us. My name's Emily Gates. I'm a volunteer with the association. I do development committee, planning, and event planning work with the association, and I'm glad to represent the board tonight. So I'm a borough resident. First of all, let me say thank you for the opportunity. Hello, Mayor Scott, council members, fellow community leadership and community members. Before outlining our request, I'll tell you a little bit about the association. I know you know about us, but just a bit. This marks our thirteenth year that a portion of the borough and property has been leased to the association. We currently have one hundred and ten member dogs belonging to ninety-four member families. And in 2021, membership experienced a real surge in growth, which we believe is a result of new dog adoptions during the pandemic and community members seeking the outdoors and socialization during periods of lockdown. Of the ninety-four families I mentioned, forty-eight are new members in 2021 to date, which is a growth rate of over fifty percent. However fortunate as those numbers are, expenses have not decreased during the past eighteen months. Park maintenance, insurance payments, as well as technology upgrades have made major hits to our funds. The association's $2,500 grant funding request includes funding for weather-resistant benches to replace plastic chairs, various landscaping improvements, including stump removal and the addition of native trees, and also replacement of non-functioning lighting with solar motion detection lighting. In completing this work, the association would utilize as many local businesses as possible in an effort to support additional borough residents and the local community. Our funding request aligns with the comprehensive plan for a combination of reasons. You have the application in front of you. I won't go into too much detail of those. But improving quality of life, improving land use, encouraging participation from the entire Carlisle community by uniting dog lovers of any income and any racial and ethnic background, providing a high-quality community facility with separate enclosures and amenities for different dogs. And lastly, and I think right now, one of the most important things, is that continuing to improve this park is a health and wellness service to our community. I moved here in mid-2020, and the park has been a location not only for my dog to be physically active and to socialize, but for me as well. In speaking with fellow members, I've heard more than one person say that the park saved them. And that conversation involved individuals recently experiencing divorce, the loss of a partner, and others that relocated to the area. In the coming month, we'll be celebrating someone that is attaining U.S. citizenship. So it's a great diverse group of people that come to their park with their member dogs. So unconscionably, the association and the park, it maintains our vital resource to our community, and thank you for your time and the opportunity to consider our funding request.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Emily, before she, she? Sorry.
Obviously, the first time here.
It would have been okay. Thank you. Okay. Oh.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Okay. There you go. Go ahead. We have you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Emily. That was fantastic. The only things that I wanted to add was the last year and a half has been a significant challenge for us for fundraising. The previous board fortunately did a great job with that prior to the pandemic, and they left us with a fairly significant war chest. However, fundraising opportunities were just not there when everything shut down. And so the new board, which started on at the end of last year, has made a great number of strides for safety and for just improving the functionality of the park itself. And we have spent down our account quite a bit. So insurance is probably our biggest cost per year that is significant. And the $2,500 for the outside agency funding would simply help us to not spend all of our money just on insurance, but allow us to actually make significant improvements to the safety and the aesthetics of the park.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Rob. Any questions for Rob? Okay, we appreciate it. Thanks again. Okay, next up, Stephanie, I hope I'm giving you enough time to restart the timer. You tell me to slow down if I need to. It's Carlisle Area Health Auxiliary.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Hare, and I'm representing the Carlisle Area Healthcare Auxiliary. We were founded, oh, we're at 361 Alexander Spring Road, which is the UPMC Carlisle Hospital. We were founded in 1916, and we're there to raise funds and provide volunteers for the healthcare and wellness of the greater Carlisle area. We were jointly with the hospital until they broke up in 2003 or something, and they became for-profit. So we're our own nonprofit 501(c)(3). So we're with the hospital. We provide things for them, but we're totally different from them. They give us no money. They only give us the gift shop, room for the gift shop. What we do is we raise money. We buy car seats for families that come in through our emergency room or leave through the nursery and don't have any car seats. We also provide special baby rockers. If there's any babies that come in that are addicted, they get a special rocker, because if you have to give them any kind of medication, they have to go to the NICU at Harrisburg. We provide the ER with clothes from community aid bin. If your clothes are cut off during an accident, we have sweats and stuff like that there. Pictic tables for the staff, and also we have a walking path that we have benches for. We also give monies to truck stop industry, or truck stop ministries that will take our, kind of taxi our patients back and forth, Sadler. We also provide AEDs to Big Springs Schools and therapeutic riding helmets. Our major thing is scholarships, because as we know, healthcare is a big thing now, and with the virus and things like that. And we want to have, you know, quality nurses, doctors, physician's assistant, respiratory therapist, everybody. So we probably spend seventy-five, seventy-five percent of our funding on scholarships. Right now, we are supporting twenty-three students. What we do is we take your application and we give you money throughout your study. So if you're a four-year BSN program, we might give you $4,000, but you would get $1,000 your freshman year, $1,000 your sophomore year. So we support you through all four years. Plus, we can keep an eye on you and see that you're not changing majors. So, so we have twenty-three students that we're right now supporting. Eleven are studying to be registered nurses, two are studying to be BSNs, five are in physical therapy. There's two in occupational therapy, one in speech therapy, one in her master's degree of nursing, and one physician's assistant. Those are the twenty-three students. Last May, we had thirty applications for our scholarships, and we gave away eight scholarships. Four to Carlisle High School students and four to Big Springs students. One is studying to be a physician's assistant, one is a BSN, one is a master's student, and there's five RNs that are, that we're supporting now for, for a while. We keep track of them. So in 2021, we had six graduates. Dani is an RN in our ICU here. Anna is working on MedSearch II. Naomi is in the ICU, NICU at Hershey. Cheyenne is labor and delivery, and Megan is a physician's assistant with a OB-GYN. So we want to believe in these students. We want them to come back here, and I'm asking for funds. All our funds have come from uniform vendors and from our gift shop. And of course, the last eighteen months, our gift shop has barely been open, and alls we're doing is like food trucks and raffle baskets and things like that. So we like to give away about $20,000 a year. Last year was $13,500. So I'm asking for any funds for the scholarship committee for the Carlisle Area Healthcare Auxiliary, because these students will come back here and work among you. They work at Forest Park, they work at Carlisle Regional, they work at the schools. So, any questions? I'm sorry. I talked so long. I'm a newbie.
Yeah, Ellen, is your first time here. It's not critical, but sometimes helpful if we have some sense of how many people within the borough are being, being served. Do you have any sense, sense of that?
Well, when they graduate, they're serving on MedSearch II in the ER, physician's assistants. I have one at, you know, working. So we're only giving monies away to like eight students, but then when they come back here, and we have like an eighty percent coming back to the area, then they're working. You know, I have one student that she started as an aide at Forest Park Rehabilitation Center. She came to us. We gave her money for LPN school. She did that for like five or six years, and now she's an RN here at the hospital. I have two sisters that are from Carlisle. They're Bosnian, and they both graduated with RN degrees, and they're both working at the hospital. I have an Amazon worker who was like in her fifties, and all her worker bees said, "Oh, you're such a mother. You take such good care of us." And she said, "I always wanted to be a nurse." So she came to us, and we sent her to Franklin County LPN school, and she's in LPN now. And she said, "I just needed somebody else to believe in me." So. I'm also, I was a candy striper when I was younger, and they gave me, you had to work so many hours to get a scholarship, and that's how I became. So I'm giving back to, you know, I'm an employee at the hospital, at the wound center, and I'm doing the scholarship committee, so.
So it's fair to say, at least some number of people, the students that you're supporting are coming from, from the borough, and not only that, a large majority of them are coming back and continuing to serve this area.
Correct. We send out applications to Carlisle High School, Big Springs High School, Boiling Springs High School, and also Shippensburg High School. And then we send applications out to all the nursing homes. So we got one from Sarah, well, we got two or three people from Sarah Todd. We sent them to Cumberland Crossings, to all the nursing homes, so that we can, you know, if there's an aide or somebody there that wants to go on, they can also. And then our own hospital that we have, so.
Okay. And you're one of the organizations that didn't provide a specific dollar amount. Or do you have a specific dollar amount in mind, or you're just kind of going to leave? Oh, you did. I'm sorry. It's not on my, it's not on my sheet here. Yeah.
Pardon me?
You didn't have a specific dollar amount.
Yeah, I didn't ask for, I mean.
No, that was the scholarship awards, I think that you outlined, yeah. Okay. Okay. Any other questions from council? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay, next up, Carlisle Arts Learning Center.
Hello, I'm Becky Richardson, Executive Director, Carlisle Arts Learning Center, 38 West Pomford Street. I think you wanted that. I've been here, so I will be brief. But we are, we've been in the borough for twenty-nine years. We'll be actually kicking off our thirtieth anniversary. And we are committed to bringing important, powerful exhibits and works of art, an extensive art education program, and strengthening our community through the arts with partnerships and collaborations. Specifically, our proposal is a request for funds towards the artworks program, which is a free after-school program for middle and high school youth. We have fifteen middle school students who come, and then they, a few of them are elevated to high school leaders. And the goal and the mission of that program is to give back to the community through the arts, which many of the, so they do not create works that they take home. Everything goes out into the community. A few examples of projects they've worked on have been the butterflies on the side of Sadler, the windows downtown at the CenturyLink Building. Right now, it's the Lunchbox Moment series is still on. We're starting to think about what's next. Public works of art need to be maintained, and so we really believe in temporary, meaningful works of public art that create important dialogue and send a message to bring our community together and to rally around certain messages of positivity and diversity. And any questions?
Any questions?
So, all right. I said brief. I was committed.
I know. Before you step away, because there was something I learned over the last year or two from your organization, that you have, I hope you continue to have some scholarships that you provide to children for the classes that you take that don't always get, get used up, right?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. So we, we are committed to having scholarships and never saying no to anyone. So the artworks program is grant-funded, and they pay, students are asked to pay a $50 material fee, which I call a commitment fee, because if somebody signs up for free, they write their name down without, you know, fully committing. But I have scholarships for, for anyone who cannot afford that. So there's not like a tuition or registration fee. It's just the materials fee. But that fee is so low that it wouldn't cover all the materials for these types of projects.
Great. Yeah, I just thought it was a good, good time to advertise that, because the last time we talked about it, it was looking for, looking for people to use them up, so.
Right. Yes. Yeah. Because it is sometimes getting the word out that we have them. Yeah.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Next up, Carlisle Opportunity Homes. And Bazoo, perhaps?
Yes.
Joni was there for me. There you are. We see you, and I think we hear you.
Okay.
There we go.
I'm Joni Capone. I am on the Board of Directors for Carlisle Opportunity Homes, and I'm also the treasurer of the organization. So this is why it's so appropriate for me to come before your committee and talk about some funding. Carlisle Opportunity Homes, I made a presentation last year, but a lot of people don't know about Carlisle Opportunity Homes. So a little history is that when Carlisle, back in the sixties, adopted a housing code and embarked on a program to assure that all dwellings in the borough were safe, a group of Carlisle residents led by the late Jimmy George organized Carlisle Opportunity Homes back in 1968. And their mission became helping the people of Carlisle to live in safe, healthy, and attractive neighborhoods. So currently, Carlisle Opportunity Homes owns thirty-one properties in the northwest part of town, and we provide them as rental homes for low-income families. Many of our homes were built in the early 1900s. They're old. And we have, among our residents, we have sixteen families. Ten of them are single mom households. We have eleven senior citizens, and a number of them have grandchildren living with them. And then we have a few residents who are disabled and are living on fixed incomes. And as a nonprofit organization, our income consists of the low rent that we collect each month to make it affordable for these families. We get an occasional grant to assist in covering the cost of homeowners' insurance, taxes, and maintenance for each property. But we don't receive any government funding at all. And our average rent is $334 per month, which is affordable for these families. We go according to percentage on their income. And this year, you know, not only with it being a struggle with COVID and such, we got smacked with maintenance costs for a number of our old units, along with routine maintenance, such as, you know, plumbing leaks and replacing appliances that are working. We did rebuilding of a wall to insulate it and replace the window and door to make the home warmer. We also paid over $5,000 in roof repairs. We had an asbestos abatement, and we had two sewer line repairs at the cost of $16,310. That was a lot with everything else that we need to do on a routine basis. For example, in August, we received just under $10,000 in rent. And our routine maintenance expenses, which include materials and labor for the month of August, that was $2,766. But because of sewer line work that we had at 43 West North Street and the asbestos abatement that we had to perform at 147 West North Street, and those are the older homes along West North Street there, our total maintenance costs for August came to $11,466. So you can, you can hear our income is this much, our maintenance costs were more. And that's not including, you know, what we were paying towards homeowners insurance that month and for property taxes that month. that month and for property taxes that month. So our budget's pretty tight. And we are hoping that with this agency that we can get some assistance in funding the repair of the sidewalk that was torn up to repair that sewer line of forty-eight West North Street. It's a sidewalk that's located in a high-traffic area there because it's just down the street from the store, and it's required repair, and the estimated cost is a thousand eight hundred dollars for that. And I just got that estimate today. That's what they estimate the cost is to repair that sidewalk. And when I submitted my proposal, I asked if we could receive at least nine hundred dollars to help pay towards that repair for the cost of that sidewalk. Yes, that would be so helpful because our budget is pretty tight, and we're always receiving surprises with these older homes as we continue to try to maintain them and keep them as comfortable as possible and safe and warm for these families that are really appreciative of having a place to live that's not making them go bankrupt in this time. So, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Joanie? Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next up is Carlisle Summer Fair.
I'm George Douglas, member of the Summer Fair Board. I live in one thousand Horse Road in the borough of Carlisle, and I've been on the board for several years. This is our forty-fifth year of Summer Fair. I'm sure many of you are familiar, I know Sean's familiar with Summer Fair. What we call it a staycation, meaning for families who don't have the resources to take a typical summer vacation, we provide a free week of activities for both children and adults. We start out with our opening ceremonies, well over a thousand people, free ice cream social, plenty of kids' games, chief speakers is always there for a concert, and then during the week, there's always activities. The next day, there's a craft show on the Rush Campus Dixon College. Other things we have, round-the-town bike ride, children's art activity, baby races. We always end with the Harrisburg Symphony, which is great, very, when I say a thousand people, I bet the symphony gets four thousand people. The lawn's just packed. I'm sure people have been there for that concert, it's great. But fundraising is always a concern. We've had a two-year hiatus because of pandemic. We're already sending out our sponsor letters, we have our fingers crossed that we have sponsors that continue to sponsor us, that have sponsors in the past. You have always been a sponsor, we appreciate it very much. We also thank you for the Carlisle Open Pool Night, it's an in-kind donation that the borough gives to Summer Fair. But our request is five hundred dollars to help our overall operating budget, which I estimate each year, it's going to go up probably this year with the pandemic, but it's around a little over twenty thousand dollars to put it on every year. So thank you for consideration. Any questions?
Any questions? Thanks, George.
Thank you. Thank you for your help.
Next up is Carlisle Tool Library.
Hello, members of the board. Thanks for having me. My name is Jeff Adams, I'm the Executive Director of the Carlisle Tool Library. We're at seven thirty-five Factory Street in Carlisle. We've been here for three years, and we're a lending library that lends out. We have over nine hundred tools to the public. Members come in, they can check tools out, similar to the book library at Boslar, and take them home, use them, and then bring them back. Something else we have is a workshop, so it's a fully functioning wood shop. It has all the major professional wood shop tools like saws, miter saws, table saws, drill presses, blades, and we operate classes and workshops out of that. So even throughout COVID, we had classes going on last year and this year, and managed to bring in about four hundred people roughly, and a lot of those were online classes as well, but around four hundred people that participated in those classes. This upcoming year, we're trying to ramp that up because we're expecting more increased participation. So we're asking for twenty-five hundred dollars to put on ten free workshop classes, so it's two hundred and fifty dollars a class. That would just go to cover what we would expect to averagely get is, you know, if it's five to ten people in an in-person class, that's what we're expecting to be able to provide for. Some of our classes, a lot of them are home maintenance, so it can be drywall, plumbing, electrical, other times we have garden classes. So a broad array of things that we're trying to teach the people in Carlisle that they don't otherwise have access to. And, yeah, so.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next up, Cumberland County Historical Society.
Thank you for having me. I'm Trista Malazo, Community Outreach Director at the Cumberland County Historical Society at twenty-one North Pit. And we've been around in the borough since eighteen seventy-four, so not many people can say that they were able to work for an organization that's been around for that long. And even though I'm relatively new to the society, I think two of the things that I'm most proud of to say that we do and request funding for are our free or low-cost programming. It's very important to us to keep history of the county and Carlisle accessible to people. And also, our museum is free, no matter who comes in, whether you're a member or not, you can come and tour the museum. We generally, in an average year, see about five thousand people, and that's the museum alone, not our store, not our archival space or anything like that. And I budgeted about a thousand people from the borough coming through, but I'd say that's relatively higher, because it's not necessarily a problem for a borough, but for us as a Cumberland County Historical Society, probably between sixty and seventy percent of our engagement come from people right in Carlisle because we are right downtown. And I had requested up to twenty-five hundred, but I did some cost breakdowns, because there is one thing especially I would like to see for next year, and many of you may be familiar with this just from being from the area, but we do a kids' camp every summer. We have three week-long camps, so there'd be two for fourth, fifth, sixth graders, and one for the next level of students for the next three years. And that cost is a hundred and fifty dollars per student, but that is a week-long camp at our two-mile house right outside of the borough. It includes lunch, activities, crafts, workshops, everything like that with our Education Director. And one thing we would like to see start with that is to provide two scholarships to students from Carlisle Area School District, and also a one-year family membership for those students. We know that that is a price that we need to pay, not only our Education Director and costs for it, but we do know it inhibits a lot of families from being able to participate in this, and we want to see more engagement from people who may not otherwise be able to do this. And that would be around four hundred dollars for two students plus family memberships. We find that's very important to start to get to students who may not otherwise have those funds. We do often see students coming for six years, our themes rotate, so if you go in fourth grade and ninth grade, you probably won't have the same program. So we do see students, especially from the area, will see them for six years, which is really great to see, and if we can start that with a grant program like that, we'd like to start next year, that would be great. Like I said, money for their programming, including speaker fees, refreshment, and depending on how next year looks, streaming capabilities, because we don't want to put anybody at risk coming in to sit in a conference room for a lecture. But all of that supports that mission, and of course, keeping our museum free, because we really do pride ourselves in letting anybody, whether you're on your lunch break, stopping in town, we want you to be able to come through and engage with not only Carlisle's history, but Cumberland County's history. Thank you for the time, and are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Trista.
Thank you.
Next up, Employment Skills Center by Zoom.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
We have you. Go ahead.
All right. Perfect. My name is Mindy Tremblay, I'm the Executive Director of the Employment Skills Center, located at twenty-nine South Hanover Street here in Carlisle. Thank you for having me. The Employment Skills Center has certainly presented before Borough Council before, but this is my first time. So I know many of you are familiar with Employment Skills Center and our services, but I will give you just a very, very brief overview and then some specific information about our request. So we have been around for fifty-four years. We've been serving the Carlisle and surrounding communities. We are a nonprofit, all of our programs are free of charge to members of the community, and we are fortunate to be able to serve individuals without having to worry about a lot of income eligibility requirements, citizenship status, and that kind of thing. So it offers us a lot of flexibility to serve members of the community who are underserved, unemployed, underemployed. So with our request this year, we are requesting two thousand dollars in support of our ESL Program, which is English as a second language. It is one of our programs that has continued to grow each year, and even throughout the pandemic, we continue to receive requests from members of the community. You all know, we are in the fastest-growing county in the state, and Carlisle specifically has a variety of neighborhoods within the borough that are very diverse. And just to give you a little bit of data, just from the last three months, which is the first quarter of our program year, we currently have forty-five English-language students in our four classes that we offer. We receive funding each year through the Department of Education to only serve thirty English-language students. So just in the first quarter of our year, we have surpassed that number. Our goal is to not have a waiting list and to not turn any students away. In order to do that, we one hundred percent have to rely on supplemental funding like this in order to continue offering just high-quality instruction to members of our community who, in order to thrive here, be successful, integrate into the community, but also obtain jobs and be successful in their jobs, their language skills are critical. Those forty-five students that I mentioned, they represent fifteen different countries. I mentioned we have four different classes from beginner to advanced level. In order to continue offering that many classes, unfortunately, you know, these are historically underfunded programs, so that is why we're making the request today. As adult educators, we believe we have to invest in our community, and that's what this request would be doing. I appreciate the time to be able to present to you today.
Thank you. Any questions for Mindy? Okay, thank you, Mindy.
Thank you.
Next up, Farmers on the Square.
My name is Joe Shane. I'm here representing Farmers on the Square, which is located on the grounds of First Presbyterian Church in downtown Carlisle at two North Hanover Street. So I've been a board member of Farmers on the Square, and we have a program for the market, and just to give you a little bit of background, for those of you not familiar with the market, it's actually going on right now as we speak. It's every Wednesday from three to seven, and then in the winter months, we take it back a little bit. And we, it is a producer-only market that invites people from within fifty miles of Carlisle to bring their locally-produced nutritious food. And one part of our mission is to make sure that everybody has access to this food. As many of us know, produce at farmers' markets can tend to be a little bit higher in price than other areas, so one of the programs that we've had, it's been very successful, is called Fresh Match. So what that enables people to do that are on any type of food assistance is to basically have their dollars doubled, so they can bring forty dollars and have that purchasing power doubled on a weekly basis. And for years, I've been on the fundraising committee for this for a while, we were able to maintain a fairly good routine of asking the same set of individuals, the same set of corporations, local businesses, to sustain it with approximately about fifteen thousand dollars per year, and we were able to do that for quite a while. This year, when the weather broke, and especially after the pandemic, the funds started to go fast, and our treasurer said, "Hey, we have to do something, we're going to run out of money." So we immediately set to raising additional funds, and I was amazed, within a month, we were able to raise another six thousand dollars from other businesses that we had not heard from before that stepped up. And even with that, we are very concerned that the funds are going to run out. Right now, we have approximately two thousand dollars left, and the season's not even over yet. And last week, we gave out over nine hundred dollars in matching funds, which is a big number for us, just to give you if you're not really sure. That's a lot. In fact, after today, I'm going to go help tear down the market, our manager's out, and see if I can get some numbers on what was spent today with that, so I get a better handle on where specifically we stand. So typically, what we like to do is when we go into the winter market, when usage is down, is to keep some money in reserve so that we have some rollover for the next year. But that would be nice, but we're very concerned that's even going to happen. So when the season is over, we're going to have to rethink our fundraising and probably, if you will, up our game and up our numbers so we can sustain this program. So what we're really asking for is a stopgap measure this year, and whether or not we come back next year, hopefully we won't have to, but we're asking for twenty-five hundred dollars to help maintain the viability of the program through this season. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions, since it's the first time I've been here.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Next is the Latort Regional Authority.
I am Andy Parker, the Chairman of the Latort Regional Authority. Our office is at four fifteen Franklin Street. I want to thank you for your continuing support of the Latort Regional Authority. The LRA was created by Carlisle Borough and the surrounding municipalities with a mission to protect the Latort Spring Run and promote recreational opportunities. We've served the Carlisle area for nearly fifty years. The funding that we get from Carlisle Borough and the other member municipalities helps us continue our mission. You have our proposed budget for 2022 as part of our submission. The Latort Spring Run is a key feature contributing to the high quality of life in the Carlisle area. It also promotes tourism in the area. The Latort Spring Run Nature Trail has been a key element to that, and particularly during the pandemic, we've undertaken a number of projects to maintain bridges. While we were doing that, we also repaired and maintained the fishing decks in Latort Park. We've also added some benches along the trail, and this, along with the other funding, will help us continue to maintain the trail and add amenities and protect the Latort Spring Run. So, any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Next is Neighborhood Dispute Settlement.
Good evening. Thank you for having. My name is Kay Pickering. I'm the Vice Chairperson of Neighborhood Dispute Settlement. We, our offices are in Harrisburg, but we cover Cumberland, Dolphin, Northern York Counties, Perry County, and we have been funded before, and thank you very much for your past support. We did not appear last year, but in previous years, you have supported us with five hundred dollars, and that's what we're asking for again this year. So Neighborhood Dispute Settlement is a mediation group. During the pandemic, we've been doing mediations by Zoom, so our mediators have stepped up. We maintain a staff, we have a part-time staff person, so we have a small budget. Our volunteer mediators do not get paid, so we only have one paid staff person. But we're supported by the MDJs, the district justices, area police, courts, we get referrals from courts. So we're part of a community service to help with police. We get referrals from police. They're the first people on the scene. So we appreciate the support in the past from the Carlisle Borough. We had in the past gotten support from the Cumberland County Commissioners. We no longer receive support from Cumberland County Commissioners. We do from Dolphin County Commissioners. So we're looking to municipalities for support to keep our part-time staff person here and to keep our volunteer mediators mediating. I should say that I signed up. I have a mediation that I'm doing tomorrow evening via Zoom. So I would like to entertain any questions that the council has, and thank you for your support in the past.
Any questions? No, thank you, Kay. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Next is the Pomford Group.
Hi, I'm Pat Craig. I'm at 30 West Pomford Street downtown, and I'm president of the Pomford Group. The Pomford Group is actually a collection of for-profit merchants and restaurant owners, business people on the first block of West Pomford Street. We came together in 2006, and we formed a nonprofit in 2015. Everything that you see that happens externally, on the outside of the buildings, along the sidewalks, along the streetscape, the Pomford Group has put in place. We are structured financially by dues by our merchants, and that pays for our group marketing, which helps our individual boutique merchants keep their overall marketing cost down and have a greater reach. But then everything that is done on the outside, all of our greenscaping, we do through fundraising with our events and various ways that we can figure out how to get our hands on some money. We barter with various other people, like Sparky Loudon with CIRE Investments and the Garden Club. And various people have given us tips on how to find a good price on rain collection barrels and different things like that. But one of our biggest interests has been trying to follow the Gibbs Report of the downtown study as close as we can and to initiate it as much as possible from our grassroots organization. And one of the things they talk about is improving your greenscape, creating walkable boulevard-type downtown so that you have more people walking the streets and coming to businesses and not just driving through the town, finding a place to park and leaving. And so in trying to create that atmosphere, seating is really very, very important. And seating is something that's difficult for us to afford because it, good industrial-strength seating that doesn't have to be repainted or cared for over time, people can't walk away with it easily, is expensive. And so the benches that you see on West Pomford Street right now were ones that we scored for twenty-five bucks apiece. They came out of the Camp Hill Mall when they closed. They were never meant for outside, but we limped along with them for as long as they would last. We would like to be able to put as many benches, large seats, not anything that's going to be sleeping, you know, something that lets people come in and sit down and take in that walkable neighborhood that we're trying very hard to create. And basically, we're reinvesting back in our downtown. See if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat. Any questions?
Twenty-five. Our rainwater collection earns run about three to three-fifty, depending on what we can find on Amazon. And a lot of the benches that I've been pricing run eight-hundred and up. They're just, they have always been without, outside of our reach to be able to do that. It takes a lot of our funding that we use for other things just to buy one bench. So we'll figure it out, but help would be nice. I'm having trouble understanding. My hearing aid picks up a lot, but not a lot with the mask. Giant food stores makes benches from their plastic bags that they collect, and they give them to nonprofit organizations and parks and that kind of thing. So getting on their list might be helpful. Okay. I probably can't answer you because I also lip read, and it's not working out. Benches from Giant. They make their, they take their plastic bags and make benches out of them and they give them to parks and other places. It might be worth reaching out to them to see if they might be able to score one. I would like to see that. Because they're big. I'd be interested. Yeah. I've never heard of them.
And if you're looking for an example, Pat, of what one looks like, right outside the Bar Association on Liberty Avenue, there's a bench. It says this bench was made from recycled plastic bags by Giant.
Okay, I like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next, Safe Harbor.
Good evening. I'm Scott Schul, the president and CEO of Safe Harbor. I know most of you know who we are and what we do. We're asking for funding to fund our life skills and parenting groups. We offer these to residents in an attempt to disrupt the cycle of homelessness and help them increase emotional and physical stability. These classes play an integral part in the supportive services of the adult residents that we house. Approximately seventy individuals will benefit from these life skills and parenting classes. The curriculum for these classes includes everything from making a life plan, building and maintaining self-esteem, how to repay credit, renting an apartment, and many other topics. Simple things that we all have learned throughout our lives, whether through school or growing up, that these folks either never learned or may have learned but have forgotten due to the crisis that they're in at the current time. So we provide these classes as a way of helping them become productive citizens again in our society. We also bring in outside experts whenever possible to cover topics on finance, conflict resolution, and others topics as well. The curriculum for these classes aligns with the priorities that you've set for these funds by improving the residents' quality of life, all of whom are at risk and vulnerable, also improving the quality of life, particularly of children and youth, who are directly affected by the education and the subsequent success of the caregivers or parents who attend these classes. Again, these groups are designed specifically for adults with the intention of the participants to share and roll model lessons they've learned for the youth and their families and hopefully indirectly serving children as well. So we've asked for funding. Forty percent of our overall operating budget comes from private dollars. So that means fundraising, it means events, and it also means grants such as the outside agency grants. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'd also like to thank you for your past support.
Any questions for Scott? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Spirit Empowered Ministries.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Ron Mensor. I am the founder and executive director of Spirit Empowered Ministries. And we are a new 501(c)(3), fairly new, only a couple of years. I did present last year. And thank you for your consideration for a contribution. We exist to offer, we exist to offer an expression of love and hope back to the community. So I know that our name has ministries in it, but we're not a church. And we're 100% funded by donations, and 90% of our donations go back into the community. We're 100% volunteer nonprofit. And what we've seen over the past year, what we started to do, we serve the community at 79 East Pomford Street. And what we started last year was a drive-through type food distribution. Really, when there was a toilet paper shortage, when everything shut down, we figured, hey, let's try to get out hand sanitizers, cleaning supplies, toilet paper, that sort of thing. We started giving away canned foods and those type of items to people that could drive through, or we could just place them in their trunks. In the year that we've seen pass, the past year, we've come across different contacts within the community. And our niche really right now is we are distributing diapers at no cost. And just to give a couple of numbers, in the past year, we've given away approximately 14,000 diapers, a little bit north of that number, to families in need at no cost. So that, we see a lot of young families coming through. We do supplement that with some food and non-perishable type items. This year, we did a back-to-school clothing handout, and we do this all in the parking lot. What started as a drive-through at 79 East Pomford Street, when COVID restrictions began to loosen up slightly, we now are functioning currently under a pop tent with people who are driving into the parking lot, parking and coming up to tables, and we're able to engage them. And some of the success stories we're seeing is people that are coming to receive goods are actually coming back on other distribution dates and beginning to serving, which is excellent for us because we're 100% volunteer. So we're seeing people that are actually engaging this outreach that we call the Pomford Street Outreach. We have developed an inner healing program for emotionally wounded people that we call Mana. And it's sitting down with them and walking them through healing heart wounds. And something else we did, we tested the water with a three-night music festival over the summer for the community, which was, you know, brought in a couple of bands, a jazz band, some different musical artists, and just had some music and some food vendors come in. And we're trying to utilize this place to create a safe and friendly environment. Funds that we're asking for would go along to help cover the costs associated with community outreach events, supplies and logistics to make these sort of things happen. Going into the winter months, last year, we did continue to offer the outreach through the winter months. And our volunteers, you know, they toughed it out in the cold winter months. What we're looking at doing at the location here is trying to develop a safe and friendly environment where we can actually invite people to come in and do some type of a cafe-style type. People come in, sit down at a table, maybe somebody comes up to them and has a conversation and takes their order, and we can give them their diaper order, their food order, and we can pack their car out and really just engage them on a personal level because that's the goal of what we're really working to do. And then additional training for councilors and volunteers, that's always needed as well. So that's our pitch, what we're doing. We appreciate your consideration. We are requesting the 2,500. This is, as I said, completely 100% donations, and we don't have a great fundraising program to supply this. So we're just giving as much back as we possibly can. So thanks for hearing me, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be open to taking some of them at this time.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Ron. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next, the YWCA.
All right. Good evening. My name is Madeline Staley. I am the grant coordinator at YWCA, which is located at 301G Street. We are requesting $2,500 to go for preschool scholarships for our preschool program called Little Wonders. All right. Could you advance it for me? Thank you. You can advance it again. All right. So currently, we offer classes for children ages three to five. So they generally serve as a gentle introduction to a school setting with a focus on kindergarten readiness skills such as like number and letter recognition, social emotional health, fine growth motor skills, science, the art, outdoor education, and more. We do have a garden as part of our outdoor education where the kids can pick food and take it home with them whenever they leave for the day. So typically, in most years, we are able to provide scholarships on a sliding scale based on need. However, with a decrease in funding due to COVID-19, we currently only have funding for one partial scholarship. But the statistics consistently show that preschool is a long-term benefit for children and families. Typically, children who are enrolled are less likely to re-graduate and are more likely to graduate from high school. They have lower rates of arrest and incarceration and are more likely to attend college. But accessing these programs can be difficult due to the expense. So the Pennsylvania Key reports that the average weekly cost for one child to go to childcare in Pennsylvania is $290, which monthly can add up to around $1,000 and yearly $14,000 only for one child. So as you can imagine, with that and the pandemic, this can be a huge financial burden for families. So with lunch in the Carlisle Borough, in addition to other private grant dollars and foundations, we're hoping to provide multiple families within the borough with full and partial scholarships based on need so they can reap the full benefits of a preschool education. So our hope is that not only will this benefit families in the short term with being able to receive childcare, but will also affect the child's future long-term. And its scholarship recipients will be regularly assessed with both formal assessments and classroom observation throughout the year in order to make sure that they are progressing at a developmentally appropriate level. Are there any questions at this time?
Any questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And last, and not certainly not least, Carlisle Joint Veterans Council. Is there anybody here from, well, maybe the YWCA was last. Is there anybody by Zoom? The former mayor submitted the application now. Okay. I didn't see him in the audience unless he had changed significantly in the last year or so. Okay. Well, as I said, these will be under consideration as council considers the budget in November. Thank you all for your presentations. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Moving on, tonight, we'll have an audit presentation from our friends at Smith Elliott Kearns and Company. And sir, if you could just give us your name and your business address for the record.
Certainly. Good evening. My name is Kevin Stalfer with Smith Elliott Kearns and Company, 19 Brookwood Avenue. And I just need a second to load this. Very good. So I'm here this evening to go over the results of the audit. First and foremost, again, my name is Kevin Stalfer with Smith Elliott Kearns and Company. Going to go through a summarized presentation from the results of the audit. Basically, we've tried to take your comprehensive annual financial report, your management letter, and your communication with those charged with governance. I'm glad not to see the five-minute timer up there, but I'll try to keep it somewhat close to that for you here this evening. Overall, the next page, just a summary for you. Overall, I think I'd be very pleased with the results again from the audit this year. First and foremost, we were able to issue an unmodified audit opinion, which is the best you can, we can issue on your financial statements, and I'll go through those details on the next page. Also happy to report that we didn't have any findings related to our audit, so those are those material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control, and happy to report that we didn't have any issues there. Most of the funds this year had a positive change in fund balance or net position. The terminology just depends on the type of fund. A few funds were at a deficit, but nothing alarming there. Again, we'll go through those details shortly. The biggest change in this year's financial statements, you did have to complete what's known as a single audit. Your total federal expenditures exceeded $750,000, so we had to perform certain testing on those federal dollars. So we'll go through those details later, but also happy to report no findings related to that as well. So again, overall, I think very positive results from the audit this year. So the next page are just the details of the independent auditor's report. Again, this is where we, as your independent auditors, issue our opinion on your financial statements. And again, we were able to issue an unmodified audit opinion. Again, that essentially means that we feel that the financial statements are materially correct and can be relied upon. It is not an opinion on internal controls, nor is it an opinion or results of fraud investigation. I know sometimes people hear the word audit, they think it's all-encompassing and that we look at every transaction. Although it may feel like it to Richard and his staff, we do not look at every transaction. We perform sampling to ultimately issue the opinion that the financial statements are materially correct. And again, we were able to do so this year. Also included in the financial statements is what's known as the Management Discussion and Analysis, or the MDNA. That basically offers a comparative narrative analysis of the financial information that's included later in the financial statement. So a good concise format for that comparative analysis. On the next page is just a little bit of general fund analysis. I know there's a lot of I know there's a lot of numbers here on this page. Basically, it's looking at just the general fund income statement for you. It compares your 2019 actual results to 2020 actual results, and it also compares your 20 actual results to the final budget as well, and offers a variance column on the right-hand side. So just a couple fluctuations in looking at 19 to 20, starting with the total revenues, you see a slight decrease of about 3%. Overall, I think that was the impact of COVID during 2020 for that. And you'll see some slight decreases in your taxes, as well as your fees and fines, as well as the investment earnings. Obviously, interest rates declined during 2020, but those were offset by increases in the intergovernmental category, and those are the grants that are received from year to year. As far as the expenditures are concerned, very comparable to the previous year, a slight increase of about 1%, but significantly under budget, mainly again, just due to kind of putting things on hold and purchases being less than 2020, and that's why you're seeing the large variance there in the expenditure category on the right-hand side. So if you take the actual results, you take your revenues, less the expenditures, less your other financing sources and uses, the bottom line, so to speak, a positive change this year of just under $500,000. If you compare that to the budget, it was a budget deficit of $581,000, so a positive variance there of almost $1.1 million when comparing the actual results to what was budgeted. On the next page, it just goes through the fund balance, so essentially your reserves, focusing primarily on the general fund and breaking it down by the categories that are prescribed by the Government Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, if you will. So your first category is non-spendable, and those are related to long-term receivables, inventories, and prepaid. A little bit of restricted fund balance, just where you're restricted by outside entities. Then you have committed fund balance where a borough council has taken action, and that split there is $500,000 for future other post-deployment benefits and $98,000 for future recreation. And then you have assigned fund balance, which is also assigned by council, the majority of that going to budget deficit in 2022, and then all, excuse me, 2021. And then also future employee benefits, $360,000, and comp plan of about $43,000. And then the last category is your unassigned fund balance, about $7.8 million, a very healthy fund balance, or that makes up about 80% of the annual percentage, or excuse me, the annual expenditures of the general fund. And then the other fund balance categories, you see the capital projects fund, about $1.1 million, Highway 8, $1.3, and asset forfeiture at around $30,000. And those are all restricted because in nature you are restricted by outside parties related to those fund balances. On the next page, it just turns your attention now to the proprietary funds or your utilities. For the most part, everything fairly comparable and positive results again this year. I'll just turn your attention to kind of the bottom line for each of the funds, your water and sewer funds, a positive change in net position of about $1 million each. The parking fund this year, a decrease of net position there. Obviously, the moratorium on charging for parking is what's driving that. The revenue's decreased, where the expenditures were still there. Again, stormwater fund, positive for this year. And again, your solid waste fund, slight decrease due to the increased expenditures related to the solid waste during 2020. On the next page, it just turns your attention now to the pension plans, and again, this is as of December 31st, 2020, but you can see the percentage there as far as how funded is it. And again, you are more than fully funded. So for the non-uniform plan, 111%, where last year that was around 102%. The police, 113%, where last year that was right around 104%. So a very positive note there as it relates to the pension plan. On the next page is just the summary of the debt margin. It looks at your debt limit over the past 10 years and increments in time there, looks at the total amount of debt applicable to that, and basically provides you with a legal debt margin and a related percentage. You can see it was right around 40% for 2011 and 2015, a slight increase up to 44% here at the end of 2020. So still, again, a lot of debt margin there, but a slight increase when it compares on two previous years. As I mentioned earlier, we did have to perform a single audit this year. The total federal expenditures reported were just about $1.6 million. The threshold for needing a single audit is $750,000 of total federal expenditures. So the program that we had to test under that is what's known as the National Infrastructure Investments, or your TIGR grant. So we looked at specifically at compliance over that grant and internal controls over compliance, and again, happy to report that we didn't have any findings related to the single audit this year. So a very positive note. And next, I'll just turn your attention now to our management letter. Purpose of this letter is to go over any new standards that'll be affecting the borough. Some of these will have some significant impacts on the financial statements. For the most part, it's just the presentation within the financial statements and some slight changes to reporting requirements. So those details are in a separate management letter. I won't go through those details with you here this evening. And then we just have some graphical analysis, which is most of what the rest of my presentation is for you this evening. So on the next graph is just a cash and investment comparison. Over the past five years, you can see the fluctuations in cash and investments by fund. In the general fund, you can see a slight decrease in 2020, nothing alarming there. There were just amounts owed to other funds that were paid back during 2020, and the biggest reason you can see that offset is within the sewer fund, you can see the increase there from 2019 to 2020. Any other fluctuation or the other large cash balances, your water fund, and that's consistently right around $6 million there over the past five years. On the next page is just a revenue comparison. Again, for the most part, everything fairly comparable. A couple of the fluctuations that you're seeing here are the intergovernmental category. Those are your grants, which obviously can fluctuate from year to year. The miscellaneous revenue in 2017, there was debt issued during that time period, so obviously that increased that category. And then in the sewer fund, those were large contributions coming from the townships in 2019, which obviously were not repeated in 2020 as the project was wrapped up there. So that's why you're seeing a large increase there within the sewer fund in the previous year. As far as the expenses are concerned, again, fairly comparable with some slight increases or decreases. The public safety had a slight increase due to police and fire expenditures, but for the most part, you're seeing decreases in your parks and recreation, as well as your water and sewer funds. And on the right-hand side, again, the increase there due to the solid waste expenditures during 2020. On the next page is just the change in fund balance or net position. So again, that bottom line, looking at it over the past five years. And again, for the most part, a surplus in each of those funds, a positive number that's above the zero line axis there for most of those funds. The outlier being your capital projects fund. Again, when you issue debt, it's, then you spend it the next year, that's obviously impacting that from year to year. And again, the sewer fund because of those contributions, but for the most part, everything, again, a positive change in fund balance or net position. On the next page is our communication with those charged with governance. Had there been any significant issues in completing the audit or disagreements with management on accounting principles, we'd have to report on those here on this letter. I'm happy to report there were no such issues or disagreements, so that's why we just considered our standard communications letter. So in summary, again, this year, we were able to issue the unmodified audit opinion, which is the best opinion that we can issue on the financial statements. Happy to report that there were no findings related to our audit and internal control. And again, for the most part, a positive change in fund balance in most of your funds and a couple outliers there. And again, performing of the single audit was different this year because of those federal expenditures. I know that was a lot of information. I don't think I made five minutes, but hopefully that was somewhat fairly close, but I certainly wanted to open up for any questions or comments on anything that I covered or from any of the other audit-related documents.
Any questions from council? All right. Everything looks good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate doing a service for the borough. If you have any questions after this evening, please go to either work there to Richard or contact me directly. We'd be happy to talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, community planning and smart growth.
Mr. Mayor, I have two items tonight. The first item is an update on the preliminary land development plan for 800 Belvedere Street. And I'll look to Mark.
All right. I'll take care of this. You will have on the agenda for your next Thursday's meeting a land development plan for 800 Belvedere. In our Belvedere being just off of Wall and Bottom Road, that's a commercial property that has been vacant for probably six, seven, eight, 10 years or so. It was previously a dentist's office, I believe. The plan that was submitted was submitted after council took action to amend your Seldo, so this is covered under your new subdivision of Land Development Ordinance, and it required that the applicant, before they submitted the plan, conduct a outreach to neighbors. And that was done. There was a meeting held here at Borough Hall. There were neighbors that attended, and those neighbors also attended the planning commission meeting a couple weeks ago where this plan was discussed. Generally, planning commissions recommending approval, and also the folks that did attend showed support for the project. The project is proposing to demolish the existing structure and construct a, what is referred to as a live-work building, where it's essentially five townhomes that are offices on the first floor and living on the second floor. There is a PBS in your packet for the meeting next week, and we expect the applicant to be there. I think there's one request for a waiver, and that's the requirement to submit a separate preliminary plan.
Great. Thanks for that, Mark. Glad to hear the neighbors were supportive. And I might have missed it in the PBS, the entrance to the property, will that still be off of Belvedere? That they're not making a modification of Walnut Bottom? Is that correct?
They're not making any modifications to Walnut Bottom Road. They're moving the entrance further away from the intersection. It's a signalized intersection.
Great. Thanks for that. Any questions from council? Once, twice? All right. Thanks, Mark. Look forward to it next week. Second item I have tonight is an update and discussion on an issue we've been working on for a while here, so I'll throw it to Susan for the rental housing ordinance discussion.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Well, as you'll recall, on February 13th of 2020, Borough Council voted 7 to 0 to direct its borough solicitor at that time to draft and advertise a rental inspection program ordinance that was to be considered at your April council meeting. Fast forward to March 16th, 2020, a month later, Borough Council was faced with issuing a declaration of disaster emergency in response to Governor Wolf's March 6 proclamation of disaster emergency that urged governing bodies of all political subdivisions impacted by the COVID-19 emergency to act as necessary in meeting the adjutant seats as legally authorized under his proclamation. So given the declaration, Borough Council elected at that time, even though we had advertised the ordinance for enactment during the April 2020 meeting, you elected not to take action on the ordinance amendment until such time that the community could once again actively participate in the discussion. Hence, the declaration of disaster was lifted this summer, and we thought it prudent to at least bring the topic back up for discussion at this time, given it is also time for budget planning. And if we are going to consider a program in fiscal year 2022, it would be very wise if staff knew that in advance in order to prepare with the appropriate, at least, request for resources, et cetera. Just as a refresher, the ordinance has been on our website, March 9th ordinance has been on our website since that date, March 9th of 2020. There currently, there are only several changes that, of course, we would need to consider changing with respect to that ordinance. Initially, you had proposed that the program go live September 1 of 2020. Staff is recommending that you, if you're entertaining this ordinance for 2022, that we look at a September 1 of 2022 date. That would give us ample time within the Sustainable Community and Economic Development Department to take a close look at our resources and plan accordingly, software, staffing, et cetera. So we think that September 1, 2022 date is doable at this time. I thought that for the sake of the public, I'd just give a refresher of what the ordinance contains. So I'm just going to hit the highlights, if that's okay. So essentially, the process would start with a registration. The ordinance currently reflects no fee to register. What does registration mean? All owners, with the exception of those outlined in Section 193-11 of the draft ordinance, would register their rental properties. Registrations would be due no later than five months from September 1 of 2022. Again, it's just the September 1, 2022 date that's changed there. The five months was the provision that we had in the initial ordinance. Owners, property managers that remove, create, or convert any structure into one or more dwelling units have 30 days from completion to register their units. Any changes to ownership or occupant information is due within 10 days of said change. Recall that we had a conversation on right-to-know. Registration info is only permissible to the extent under right-to-know law. Police shall have the owner and property manager name, addressing, and emergency contact information, again, for emergency reasons. Once registered, after registering and receiving confirmation of registration from the borough, owners and property managers would then have 90 days to submit application for inspection of rental units. Exempt properties, as outlined in the ordinance, would need to submit information to the borough prior to that 90-day deadline that support the exemption status. At the time of application, every owner and property manager also is required to acknowledge the tenants have been notified of their rights and responsibilities as owners and tenants for items such as trash disposal, recycling, maintenance of property, interior and exterior, behavior, noise, and snow and ice removal. A sample lease notice and a signed copy comes to the borough with the application. Once application is made, inspections are due eight months from September 1 of 2022. That is noted in Section 193-15D. Unless exempt, rental units shall be inspected by a code official from the borough or in lieu of a borough code official. An owner, property manager, or property management company may at their own expense utilize the services of a qualified code inspector, and qualified inspectors are noted in the Of course, the borough retains the right to reject inspections and not issue a license if the borough deems the code inspector not qualified, as noted in the ordinance itself, or if those irregularities are found in the inspection reports. Owners, property managers, property management companies, and occupants under this ordinance will have a duty to provide access to the dwelling unit to the code official. The current ordinance itself, though, when we took a review of it, and this is something I wanted to draw your attention to, it does not reflect a no-show or no-access granted fee. The borough may wish to entertain such a fee since the ordinance currently states that an official may take other measures, such as obtaining an administrative warrant. So that fee for, you know, if our code official shows up and the tenant doesn't allow access or the owner doesn't show up to allow access, we may want to consider a no-show fee. After the initial inspection, properties are then placed on a three-year inspection cycle. However, if no violations occur within that three-year period, properties can go to a five-year inspection cycle. Once on a five-year inspection cycle, there cannot be any more than four violations, or the property will revert back to the three-year cycle. If four violations occur within that three-year cycle, the borough, the owner could be placed on a two-year inspection cycle. And those particular properties could revert back to a three-year if no violations occurred during that timeframe. Inspection criteria can be found in the ordinance at Section 193-16 with cross-references from sections of the 2006 ICC Property Maintenance Code. Staff is suggesting that Section 193-16A include a sentence for clarity purposes. After we took a look at it and consulted with the borough solicitor last week, we believe it should we believe it should uh a sentence indicating all other provisions of the two thousand six ICC Property Maintenance Code not referenced, they'll still, they'll still, shall still be applicable in the borough. We just want that uh in there for clarity. One ninety three dash sixteen A, you'll see a red line uh suggestion there.
So, um just to click the list that you have outlined, is being considered sort of a partial list? Potentially, based on your comment that thi- this is a partial list of specified um violations?
Yes, sir. Those are the things that the code official will be looking at when they go in. However, we want for clarity purposes that, you know, uh all other um sections of the maintenance code are still applicable within the borough, but these are the items that will be on the inspector's list.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, inspection exemptions are the same as the ones for registration, but they've been ex- they're also expanded, and you'll see those under one ninety three dash seventeen. And I can go into those if you want, uh but that's certainly at your pleasure if you want me uh to to otherwise, um one ninety three dash seventeen outlines those exemptions as well as one ninety three dash eleven for inspections. Uh, at upon inspection, uh advisory notices. Advisory notice will be issued by a code official, and it shall be given if noncompliance of the inspection criteria that's listed, uh if if there's noncompliance of any issues. Notices will include, among others, the list of deficiencies and a time to cure those deficiencies. If deficiencies are not repaired or cured, then the official inspector shall issue an enforcement letter outlining the conditions that are not repaired or cured. If it if still not uh at that point repaired, the property could be pla- placarded as unfit for human occupancy if the conditions are such that pose a threat to health and safety and or the owner being cited accordingly. Licenses are issued when inspection refills no code deficiencies or when those deficiencies outlined in the advisory notice or the notice of violation have been repaired or cured based upon a subsequent inspection by the official. The licenses to be displayed conspicuously within each unit near the main entrance. The temporary removal or absence of it, however, does not constitute a violation of the ordinance. If you recall, that was a concern by a number of individuals. Licenses can be revoked if a property is condemned, if property owners do not receive a valid building permit for a rental dwelling unit, if there are significant outstanding unresolved citations, violations related to health, safety, or on sound structures, or if there are more than six property maintenance citations or violations for the dwelling unit within twenty-four months prior to the original application or renewal of an application. The fees that are outlined are for inspection and licensing, only at this point. Seventy-five dollars per rental dwelling unit for the inspection fee and fifty dollars per rental dwelling unit license fee. We think that's very reasonable. Uh, in fact, uh we will likely continue to report out to you on uh whether or not we are recovering our costs at this at this time. I do not believe that those costs are self-si- can self-sustain the program, but we'll see. Uh, disclosure to the tenant is noted in one ninety three dash nineteen. Uh, that was important to the borough, that property owners and management companies provide their contact information uh to be disclosed to tenants before occupancy. And then finally, there is an appeal process, of course, built into this program. It's outlined in one ninety three dash twenty-two. So persons aggrieved by any action or decision of the code official concerning the ordinance's administration may appeal to the Board of Appeals. Of course, that needs to be the the uh grievance must be filed in writing within thirty days after decision, determination, or action of the officer, and the appropriate filing fee must be provided at time of appeal. Uh, Board of Appeals decisions may be appealed to the court as provided by the laws of the common law. So that just gives you a general overview of of the ordinance itself uh as it's uh currently presented.
Great, thanks for that Susan. Uh, I guess the the only question I had, based on the updates of the dates, um the ordinance will have to be redrafted and re-advertised, is that correct?
Yes.
Alright, any questions or comments from council? Go ahead.
Um, at some point during our discussions previously, I did bring this up, um and it it uh I did focus on the one ninety three dash sixteen where you had noted that um a addition about the ICC Property Maintenance Code. So the question that I have, and especially now, um you know, in the recent uh uh happening in Florida with the condo collapse. Um, so if we're uh inspecting dwelling units, um are we, is there a process in there to inspect? Because it do- in this, in the list of um options, it does say uh interior and says unsafe building, and then the next one says structure is unfit for human occupancy. And then other areas it it listed as dwelling unit or rental unit. So my question, and it it does point out a boiler and things like that. So my thought is that at some point, someone is in a basement or other areas, because um other concerns that I have are, um you know, fire hazards that are in other areas of the building that would then uh be problematic for the the rental unit, hoarding issues, things like that. Are there a, is this just for the rental units or in a multi-unit building? Is there something that allows the inspector to look for additional things like that? Just to ensure that the structure as a whole, not just the dwelling unit?
There is one clause uh under section one ninety three B. The last paragraph there, Brenda. Nothing in this section shall be construed to prevent a code official from immediately condemning the property if the conditions of the unit warrant such actions. That's seems to be all encompassing, but um I need to defer to uh legal counsel um to provide you an appropriate response to your question. I can follow up with you on that.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions, council?
Um, a little bit of a philosophical question. Um, it's nice to refresh my memory on this um after a few months, but um um, the provision you have for number of violations that sort of trigger an activity, um I have to guess it's sort of based on a on an average size, number of units. So, it doesn't seem to um maybe take into effect that if you had more, you know, a considerable number more units, you're sort of proportionately gonna gonna have to comply with with a higher percentage of units under under compliance, if that makes sense.
Is that, is that, is is a question, do the violations follow the unit or the landlord? So you're, so if you have a hundred units, four violations would be easier than if you had one? I shouldn't say easier.
It'd be the other way around. Yeah, so if you had a hundred units versus ti- um twenty, um it the same number of violations triggers an activity, or perhaps makes you have to renew sooner than you would have before. So, I guess my question is, is the number that we're using, could it be scaled to reflect a moving range of units that that would make it sort of um maybe comparable based on size?
I think that entire section I'm trying to get in front of me is is all in terms of of dwelling units. So it would be the, you know, the violations per unit.
Per unit.
So if I had a, you know, if I had a building that had twenty apartments in it, um, you know, it would be, you know, I'd have um four, four violations per unit. So my license is based on each each unit.
Each unit.
Okay, so, okay, so there is no um penalty uh ba- based on anything outside of a single unit? It doesn't take the aggregate of a violation?
Uh, I see what you're saying. So, so on the landlord and I have this, I have thirty buildings throughout the the borough and I
Right.
I have eighty violations across all those those buildings.
Does it trigger something that may be more um, you know, more likely because I have so many units than?
Right, yeah, I don't, I don't think they have anything in there that provides that.
Sure, any other, Joel, did you, you want to keep going on that, or did you have something else?
I um, that that was it. That was my only question is is whether we, and and whether we had sort of thought through that and still was comfortable with sort of the approach we were using. Yeah, that was my question. Thank you.
Thoughts, comments? Alright, so, oh, sir, um, so if you can, I I think typically we're a little more flexible, and this this was on me, when we used to debate this, um, but now there's a new state law. We we just have to be careful with following the agenda when public comment is, before and after. So I'm not saying you can't comment or ask questions, but we'll just have to get through the rest of the items, just.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, leaving.
Yep.
It's just, you know, sometimes people are watching through that, just you can't really hear what you're saying. And some ones can't want right now, have to just kind of settle with the board.
Yep. Okay, no, that that's a great point, and I think that's good for all us to know. So we'll we'll speak clearly and loudly, uh and then again, with with this, with this agenda, we'll have a time at the end for public comment as well, right? Is that, am I reading that correctly? Yep, okay, alright, so that's it for my items. Thank you.
Uh, I I do want to add one thing. Uh, Mr. Richard Fleck, one Tuesday, October fifth, provided a uh comment that he wanted a uh read into the record. So if I may.
Yes, go for it, yep.
Okay, uh Susan, thank you for the email. I need to go on record and say that many landlords in the borough are still behind on rent collection due to COVID. I have renters that have filled out all the paperwork for rent rel- relief, and they never got it. We still can't evict for non-payment. Any additional costs placed on landlords will make the hardship worse. Borough needs to understand this. Just because it has a quorum does not mean it has an appropriate time to add more cost to the landlord's burden. I respectfully ask the council delay moving forward on this until at least three to six months after landlords can evict and replace the tenants with ones who can actually pay rent. And that's, please read the comments to the council at the meeting tomorrow.
Great, thank you for that. I gue- I guess before I finish up too, we'll we'll have um additional time for comments via email, I assume, within within the next week. Um, and I think it was helpful, Susan, that you cleared up the change of the date that would extend, in theory, extend till September twenty twenty two, and then you wouldn't, in theory, have to register until twenty twenty three, so that's important um to note as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Moving on to economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items this evening. Um, first, I um opposed that Borough Council ratified Destination Carlisle's installation of fall and holiday decor on Borough downtown lamp posts. Decor will be on display for October, and be removed the first week of November. Approval is retroactive to October first, twenty twenty one.
Uh, Councilor Hicks makes a motion to ratify Destination Carlisle's installation of fall and holiday decor on Borough downtown lamp posts. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last item I have, um, uh I make a motion that Borough Council uh ratify the temporary use of application of the West Chapel Avenue parking lot for activities sponsored by Earth Artisan and Outfitter. The Earth-based Arts Sale event was held on Sa- Saturday, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, from seven AM to six PM.
Councilor Hicks makes a motion to ratify the temporary use application of the West Chapel Avenue parking lot. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, public safety, I I move the council direct the borough solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance amending chapter one one zero Drugs and Paraphernalia of the Code of the Borough.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, and uh just by way of background, in September twenty twenty, our colleague, Councilor Jeff Stube, introduced the concept of modifying penalties issued for possession and smoking marijuana. Research was completed, and Borough Council discussed this topic at multiple meetings, and December of twenty twenty ultimately approved a temporary one-year pilot program. Since the December twenty twenty, Carlisle Borough has been monitoring impacts from this temporary program. And while there have been a few instances of misunderstandings about the ordinance, uh overall, there have been not any significant impacts to the community. Um, so, so here we are today, and with dur- during the September twenty twenty one meeting, the Borough Council staff was directed to move forward with the preparation to consider a more permanent option for this ordinance. Staff has been working with our solicitor to prepare the updated draft ordinance, and I I recommend that we approve the drafting and advertising of the ordinance, and follow our normal process for public review and the proposed changes. Alright, um, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh just just to, for for everybody's sake, um the ordinance revisions as drafted would delete section one hundred and ten dash one of the current ordinance, which contains the findings legislative intent. Um, that's essentially the background language in the ordinance that there was ex- uh concern expressed about during the September meeting. Uh, in addition, it amends section one ten dash eight, which is the reporting provisions in the ordinance. Um, i- it would make those reporting provisions effective for five years, um and and then they would uh no longer be effective after that time unless council would further amend the ordinance. Um, and then, as you alluded to, it amends section one ten dash nine of the ordinance, which is the expiration provision, thus making the ordinance itself permanent.
Thank you, Mr. Stube, for caucusing that ordinance. I appreciate that. Any further discussion on this item? Alright, hearing, unless, Mr. Schultz, okay, okay. Alright, hearing none. All those in, oh, yeah, this is McCullough.
I did.
He did. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. And that ends my report. And, oh, and and, you know, oh, that's right, I'm not done. Yes, that's right.
You're ready to talk.
I know, right? Sorry about that. I know, right? Uh, I move the council retroactively approve a special events application submission by Rebellious Rose to be held at Memorial Park, and shall include the closure of West Penn Street at the intersection of North Pitt and Northwest Streets from eight AM to five PM on Saturday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty one. This event shall highlight unity, minority-owned businesses, food vendors, and children activities. Applicants will be responsible for one hundred percent of the variable and ten percent of the fixed costs incurred by the Borough of Carlisle. Approval is retroactive to September twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. And we'll make a note that uh valid certificate of liability insurance and naming the Borough of Carlisle as additionally insured has been received. So I still move.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Oh, I'm just skipping around here. And my final item, I move the council retroactively approve closing a portion of Church Avenue behind Carlisle Theater on September twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, from ten AM to twelve PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries, and that ends my report. Public works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one item tonight. I asked Borough Council to approve the purchase and installation of monitoring equipment and gate access control at the Borough's Field Operations Garage site by Camtech Systems Incorporated for forty-one thousand seven hundred dollars through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program, Co-Stars Program.
Council Fullham Winston moves that the, that council approve the purchase and installation of monitoring equipment and gate access controls at our Field Operations Garage. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
That completes my report.
Alright, we are now to new business. Uh, if there's anyone that would like to, uh, address council on an item concerning borough government that has not been covered this evening, now would be the time. Going once? Or, or the Tasman, yes. Okay, alright, seeing as no, no new business, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. See you next week.